Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Ortega?
Stevens?
Here.
Black?
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Reverend Jim Jones, representing Blazing Grace Church?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to read something real quick before we start. Out of Chapter 5 in Matthew. "In seeing the multitudes he went up on a mountain, and when he was seated his disciples came to him. And then he opened his mouth and taught them, saying, 'Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted; blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth; blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be filled; blessed are the merciful, for they shall obtain mercy; blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God; blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the sons of God; blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven; blessed are you when they revile and persecute you, and say all kinds of evil against you falsely for my sake. Rejoice and be exceedingly glad, for great is your reward in heaven, for so they persecuted the prophets who were before you.'" Lord Jesus, we come to you tonight. We thank you for the love that you have for each of us. Lord, I ask for your continued grace and mercy on this country and on this world. Father, the things that we're going through right now may or may not end. So we adapt and we go forward. Lord, we know that you're coming, and we thank you that that is true. And we thank you that we have that to look forward to. So bless us as we go through the things that are going on right now and give each of us the strength and the peace and the comfort in our homes, in our families, at work, at our jobs. Lord, be with our first responders, our EMTs, our police officers, our firefighters, for they are out on the front lines. Be with those in the hospitals. And also, Lord God, thank you that at least there are meetings happening again. Bless this city, Lord, and bless its leadership. Watch over us. Keep us strong for one another. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 3, is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda item. A) Payroll and Material Claims. Council may wish to consider the payroll and material claims for the month of February 2021. Jim, how are you tonight?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You have before you a material claims report, and I've given the City Council some details as it relates to the backup for all of the items that are listed on the one-page back and front report. The total material claims for February of 2021, $2,755,699.26. The amount of those claims are $60,588.24 more than a month, the same month in the prior fiscal year. The claims for February of 2021 are about $652,000 more than what the claims were for January of 2021. Most of that variance, the $652,000, mostly consists of bond payments that were made on the animal shelter bonds that are outstanding, the water pollution control bonds that are outstanding, and then there were some other items, including water meters that were purchased for $228,447. There were some included in the claims is $262,707.55 for procurement card purchases. And if the council has any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Questions, Council? Thank you, Jim. Move to Agenda Item B, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Daniel Lewis Exrum to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, replacing Rhona Martinez, who resigned. Daniel's term will begin March 5, 2021, and will expire February 17, 2022. C) Pocatello Development Authority Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Victoria Byrd to serve as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority Board of Directors, replacing Scott Smith, who resigned. Victoria's term will begin March 5, 2021, and will expire May 1, 2023. D) Council Decision Annexation of Approximately 8.65 Acres of Land Located East and Southeast of the East End of Vista Drive. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving an annexation of a parcel of land comprised of approximately 8.65 acres. The parcel is located east and southeast of the east end of Vista Drive and will be zoned residential low-density RL with the Comprehensive Plan Map Designation of Residential. Councilwoman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number 3, Items A through D.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 4, the Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. March 11, 9:00 a.m. will be a City Council Work Session. March 18, at 2:00 p.m. will be the City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting Has Been Counsel. March 18, at 2:00 p.m. will be a special City Council Meeting for the mayor and council to receive training from the State Attorney General's Office. March 18, 5:30 p.m. Clarification Meeting, and March 18, 6:00 p.m. Regular City Council Meeting. Other events: School District 25 Supplemental Levy and Recall Election is March 9. Early voting at Bannock County Election Office ends March 5. Annual Spring Cleanup at City Cemeteries begins March 29. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera. They have placed on a cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the item by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. As a reminder, face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the city of Pocatello. We'll move to Agenda Item 5, is a Public Hearing, CDBG Program Year 2019 Action Plan Amendment. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding two proposed amendments with the Program Year 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Annual Action Plan. These amendments were reviewed and recommended for approval by the CDBG Advisory Committee at their meeting on February 19, 2021. A five-day written comment period began February 25, 2021, and concludes, as soon as I get my space, my spot back here, and concludes March 4, 2021. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to approve the amendments and authorize submission, including any public comments to HUD. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Lisa Smith, the CDBG Grant Administrator and Compliance Analyst for the city of Pocatello. As described by the mayor, this hearing is the oral comment opportunity for two amendments to the Program Year 2019 Action Plan. The first amendment is to accept the Third Round of CARES Act funding of $234,000 and add it to the Program Year 2019 Action Plan so that it can be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. The second amendment will increase the budget for the COVID Emergency Assistance Program by $87,787. The program has already utilized $124,000 to assist Pocatello residents who have experienced a loss or reduction of income due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The additional $87,787 is necessary to help Pocatello residents at risk of losing their housing and will allow staff to process the applications on the waiting list. The CDBG Advisory Committee recommended these amendments at a February 19 Special Committee Meeting. Copies of the recommendation have been available at the Marshall Public Library, Neighborworks Pocatello, Life, Inc., the Housing Authority, and here at City Hall, as well as on the website for interested parties to review. A five-day comment period began Thursday, February 25, concluding today. No written comments have been received. Following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to accept the committee's funding recommendation and authorize the amendment's submission to HUD. That completes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, Councilman Bray?
Yes. You mentioned a program with a backlog of applicants.
Yes, sir.
How extensive is that backlog?
So the program ran out of funding about three weeks ago, and the need is great. So we probably do have almost two dozen applicants waiting.
So the backlog is created by the lack of funding approval?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Madam Clerk, have you received any written correspondence in your office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. See and none. I don't know if you have anything else to say, Lisa, but I would go ahead. And I declare the public hearing closed. Council, these items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the two amendments for the CDBG funding.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 6, Short Plat Love-to-Bid.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Did that motion include submission to the two HUD of the plan?
I thought I heard that.
I thought it was just to approve the two amendments, so I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I think it's part of the motion.
Okay. That's a necessary component, so I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought it was submitted to HUD. Okay. Thank you. Agenda Item 6, Short Plat Love-to-Bid Subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short-plat application by Love-to-Bid LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide approximately 6.61 acres into four lots. The subdivision includes a replat of Lot 3, Block 1, a prime-time subdivision. The general location of the subject property is 3300 South Fifth Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Agenda Item Number 6, the short-plat Love-to-Bid Subdivision, with all applicable standards and conditions as recommended by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 7, IFT Foundation Grant to Enhance the Old Town Connection Trail. Council may wish to consider the following request regarding an IFT Foundation Grant: A) Approve submittal of an IFT Foundation Grant application in the amount of $10,000, and if awarded, B) authorize the mayor's signature on the program agreement outlining the program. The Old Town Connection Trail is supported by the Terry First Planning Project done in 2018, as well as the Greenway Trail System Master Plan. This project includes an artfully painted 300-foot asphalt trail, signs, streetlights, fencing, bench, waste, reciprocals, and paint for art on the concrete wall under the bridge, and six columns. This IFT grant would cover funding for electrical, infrastructure, and paint. This project has already been awarded multiple grants, and this money would provide the remaining funding necessary. There is no local match. If awarded, this project is scheduled to be constructed this summer. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the submittal of this grant application to the IFT Foundation, and if awarded, we authorize the mayor's signature on the program agreement outlining the program. I guess we ought to throw in subject to legal review.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 8, Idaho Transportation Department Grant SFY 2023 ADA Curb Ramp Application. Council may wish to consider the following request regarding an ITD ADA Curb Ramp Grant: A) Approve submittal of two grant applications to upgrade curb ramps at the intersections of Clark Street and Fifth Avenue (First Priority) and Clark Street and Fourth Avenue (Second Priority) in the amount of $119,800. And if awarded, B) authorize the mayor's signature on the program agreement outlining the program. This is a state-administered program that provides funding for projects to address curb ramp on the state highway system. There is no local match required, and the design will be done in-house. If approved, staff anticipates the grant to be awarded in the fall of 2021, and funds will be available after July 1, 2022. Councilwoman Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Idaho Transportation Department grant for ADA Curb Ramp, and that we authorize your signature as needed and any legal review as necessary.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Bus Donation Acceptance from Blackfoot Senior Center Transit Department. Council may wish to accept staff recommendation and approve acceptance of a donation of one 2008 Ford Starcraft Cutaway Bus from the Blackfoot Senior Center, subject to legal department review. Staff anticipates the equipment to be utilized for a minimum of five years. If approved, the bus would be used for a system-wide fixed route and door-to-door service. There are no additional requirements for acceptance of the donation. Council President Adamson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the bus donation, subject to legal review.
Second.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lyric. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Annual Trade and Purchase of Handguns Police Department. Council may wish to consider the Pocatello Police Department's recommendation and accept a quote from the Salt Lake Wholesale Blue Label Glock Dealer for Law Enforcement for the following firearms, to be used by members of the Pocatello Police Department: A) Trade in 18 older Glock 21 firearms, and if approved, purchase 18 new Glock 17 MOS handguns. Staff can purchase the new Glock handguns at a discounted rate of $255.50 per gun. Total purchase cost will be $4,599. Funds are available in the Police Department Fiscal Year 2021 budget. Councilwoman Lyric?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the annual trade and purchase of handguns for the Police Department as outlined in Agenda Item Number 10.
Second.
Do we need to declare surplus? That's the note from the attorney. We need to declare the guns surplus.
The ones that are being traded in by approving, that should basically declare them surplus, yes.
So that is done in the action itself. Okay. So we have a motion by Lyric and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Trade and Purchase of Firearms Police Department. Council may wish to consider the Police Department's request to be allowed to transfer firearms from evidence in accordance with Police Department Policy and Idaho Code 55-403 regarding unclaimed property in possession of the Police Department. The firearms will be traded locally for shotguns to be used as less lethal shotguns. The firearms will be used by members of the Pocatello Police Department: A) Absorb into the department's inventory approximately 270 firearms that have been removed from evidence and, if approved, B) approve trade-in of the firearms to Huck's Customs, a local business, for new shotguns to be used as less lethal shotguns. Councilwoman Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the trade and purchase of guns as per Agenda Item Number 11, pertinent to all the applicable departmental policies and Idaho codes.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Surplus and Sale of Seized Assets Request Police Department. Council may wish to accept the following request from the Pocatello Police Department, subject to legal department review: A) Declare four vehicles as surplus which were seized during ongoing investigations. The vehicles have been adjudicated and awarded to the Police Department by the Bannock County Prosecutor's Office in accordance with asset forfeiture laws; B) Declare two vehicles as surplus that were purchased with narcotic funds and have been in use by the narcotics unit for several years; and C) Authorize the sale of the vehicles through auction and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents. Councilwoman Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the surplus and sale of seized assets by the Police Department as per Agenda Item Number 12, and authorize any signatures from you as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Airport Grant Application. Council may wish to approve submission of the following grant applications, and if awarded, approve acceptance and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents: A) A grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRSA, to be administered by the FAA. The grant is in the amount of $1,014,820 to be used for costs related to airport operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, and combating the spread of pathogens at the airport; and B) A grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRSA, to be administered by the Federal Aviation Administration. The grant is in the amount of $9,344 to be used to provide relief from rent and minimum annual guarantees for on-airport car rental agencies and in-terminal airport concessionaires. There is no local match required for either grant. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve these two grant applications regarding the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and that we authorize the mayor to sign all pertinent documents following legal review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Council Decision Regarding Ordinance Number 3061 Face Coverings. This time has been set aside for council to revisit ordinance 3661, I'm sorry, revisit ordinance number 3061, an ordinance establishing standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places as approved by council November 19, 2020, effective November 21, 2020. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, when we began this mask mandate and all the health precautions related to COVID-19, we were told it was to preserve medical facility's ability to serve the public. Medical personnel at hospitals were concerned they would not be able to handle regular medical needs, outpatient procedures, emergency cases, and elective procedures if the facilities were overcrowded with COVID-19 patients. So masks were encouraged or mandated. We were told to socially distance and practice more frequent hand washing. That was nearly a year ago. Since about the 11th of December, COVID-19 cases in Bannock County have been on a steady decline. We've gone from 820 active cases to about 220, and that's out of 85,000 people. The average daily rate is now just over 20. In fact, today it was 7. Tuesday and Wednesday, there were 33 cases of COVID-19 confirmed each day in the entire southwest Idaho region of 175,000 people. Vaccines against the virus are rolling out at several locations across Pocatello. Portnitz Medical Center has closed the testing center at the Idaho Central Credit Union Office in Chubbit, and has consolidated their own internal testing sites at the hospital to one simple location. There just isn't enough demand for those services to keep them open. In fact, Dr. Snell, the spokesperson for Portnitz Medical Center, said Wednesday that he doesn't expect the COVID-19 virus to ever go away. I think most people agree it's here to stay, much like a cold, the flu, pneumonia, measles, mumps, and other diseases. I still wear a mask when I'm in a public place and can't distance myself, and I will continue to do that. I encourage the public to take the same precautions. But I think it's time to end the mandate of City Ordinance 3061 requiring masks. Businesses can still require masks if they so desire, and the public can make their choice to wear masks or do business elsewhere. It isn't a huge inconvenience or imposition. I trust our citizens to make their own health care decisions. Today, we received an email from Matt Hunter, Chamber of Commerce executive, saying businesses are tired of this policy and don't want to have to continue to enforce it. So with that said, I move to prepare an ordinance to rescind ordinance 3061 and have it on the agenda for the March 18 meeting for repeal.
Question?
Yes.
So we have already instructed staff to prepare an ordinance for repeal, so do we need to instruct a new repealing ordinance, or can we just have that put back on a future agenda?
The repeal ordinance that was prepared for last meeting's agenda was specific to the direction that was received in the first meeting in February, so there is some minor variations in the language, but technically it would be the same ordinance.
Okay. Well, that was what I was going to ask, is I feel like when the council took this action, I don't believe that anybody on the council thought, "We're going to keep this ordinance for the next 70 years when we're all dead." You know, I mean, we knew that it would go away at some point. We just didn't know when, and that's why it comes back every month, because we knew it would have to go away at some point. So I'm just curious if maybe, this is kind of a procedural question about how is the best way to address that? Is it to keep having, like, a discussion and then have to wait for two weeks, and then, or do we just vote? And if it votes down, or votes to repeal, can we just keep having that come forward? Like, is there a way to do that? So we don't, I'm just trying to simplify. That's my question.
I'll do my best. The ordinance itself requires that it be visited by the council the first meeting of each month unless sooner repealed, correct? So that's why it has to be on the first council meeting of each month until it's repealed. As far as how you would like to see it presented... As far as how you would like to see it presented at any council meeting, that's up to you as a council in consultation with the mayor. So if you want to see the repeal ordinance as an option on every council meeting until it's repealed, then that can be done, if that's the choice of the council. But it cannot be repealed on tonight's agenda because it's not on tonight's agenda as a repeal ordinance.
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, but I'm just curious, you know, for example, if the council were not go forward with Rick's motion, do we just have to wait until the next first of the month, or can we just bring it back since we've already instructed you previously to prepare?
No, the last instruction was specific to the following meeting, which was February 18th after the February 4th meeting.
Okay.
So that was the only direction I've been given from council was to prepare a repeal ordinance on the 4th for consideration on the 8th. On the 4th, I was given direction to prepare repeal ordinance to be considered on the 18th. That was done. It did not pass that evening, and so that's the only council direction that I have at this time.
Okay. Could we do something like have a motion that the repeal ordinance would appear on the first meeting in April so that we don't have to have the two-week lag period and all of that? I think that's part of what...
You could, certainly. I think the motion that's on the floor now is the repeal ordinance being prepared for our next meeting.
Right. So I guess a question would be then, Rick, would you be open to amending that motion to still bring it back at the next meeting, but to keep bringing it back at the subsequent one?
I'd get a separate motion.
Okay.
After we decide this.
Okay.
So I have a motion on the floor, but I lack a second, I know.
Okay.
So I have a second by Adamson. That's technically where we're supposed to have the discussion.
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay. So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Any discussion in your...
Can we just clarify what the motion is?
The motion is to bring the appeal...
Repeal.
The repeal to March 18th meeting for consideration.
I want to speak to that.
Okay.
If you look at the data that's out there, there are two things. First of all, we haven't even begun to have our ordinance in place near as long as other places. The central health district that we are so embattled about in terms of being like them, they had their ordinance in for almost seven months. Immediately when that ordinance was repealed, the city of Boise put a mask mandate in the very same day. When Bonneville County looked at the data, they were monitoring, they needed to have an incident per 100,000 people, residents, equal to 15 or less for three weeks. They did that. For three weeks, they repealed their ordinance. Idaho Falls did not do anything. If you compare Boise to Idaho Falls, you're going to find that Boise has a much lower incident rate than Idaho Falls. Idaho Falls has pretty much been climbing. In fact, it's over double what it was on the day they rescinded their ordinance for 100,000 people. We were told in an email that we should address what's going on at the national level to understand what science is. Particularly, we were told we should compare California with Florida. So I did the research. California has less than half of the incident rate that Florida does for 100,000 residents. California seems to be at a lower level of inflection than Florida. I really think that with schools having mask mandates, with ISU having mask mandates, with businesses having mask mandates, we should keep, serve on this. Idaho Falls was warned by their Chamber of Commerce after they had had their mask ordinance in place almost six months that they should keep it in place. They were told that businesses found a lot of opportunity with the overarching mask mandate for the city to do business. Their Chamber of Commerce representative up there was quoted in the paper as saying that it should be in place. It should continue in place. I'm of the mindset that we have several social events coming up that really will have the chance to accelerate the spread of this if we drop the mandate right away. We have just this week had school kids go back and they're wearing masks, but we're going to tell them, if you're out of school, you don't have to. We have spring break coming up. We have spring around the corner. Even though vaccinations are rolling out, I know several seniors that because most of it is online signup, who have had hard times, and so I've had to help them make calls to get their vaccinations. We have, I know of several seniors that were not going to get their vaccinations until in April. I just think that Idaho Falls shows us that repealing this mask mandate, and it was designed not just for the hospital. That's a one-dimensional approach. This whole thing that we're operating here on our district, if you listen to their meeting, was pretty much developed out of the Idaho Falls Health District or the Eastern Idaho Health District. They set the marker there of 15 or less incidents per 100,000 for three weeks. We haven't been three weeks yet. If we're going to follow that marker, that was what they pretty much did it on. Also, when you look at the incident of our hospital usage, we're just barely in the green area. We're at 64%. Last time we met, we were at 56% of occupancy. We have gone up, well, it seems like only 8%, but that's a 20% increase or more because things are changing. And I just think that we are in a community where we have a lot of things going on. We have the airports here, we have a lot of people that travel, we have businesses here that travel, we have two freeways that intersect here more so than anywhere in Idaho, and we really depend on travel. I just think this is a pro-business thing by backing up those businesses who really want the mask mandates in place. I had an email from someone today that said they really appreciate the mask mandate. It takes the pressure off of them and their business. And so I really think we need to do this. We had a president, former president and a current president both said this is something equal to war. And I think if we pull back our mask mandate today, we're giving up and we're really starting to gain our momentum in waging this war. And I don't think we should pull back until we can achieve a victory. And I know that it's not going to be something that's wiped out, but it's better to be cautious and listen to the data and see the trends and be responsive. And I don't believe that the people in Pocatello are much softer than the people in Boise or Idaho Falls and can't endure this mask for at least another month.
You can, Linda?
And I wanted to just add one thing to your point there about the emails that mentioned listening to the experts, and some of them mentioned other states like California or Florida or whatever, but several people pointed to listening to the experts in our state and saying that because central health over in the Boise area repealed it, that that's what we should be listening to. And they said that we ourselves claimed we were going to be listening to experts, so we should do that and listen to them and follow their lead. When I personally said that I was listening to the experts, I was talking about the local experts. So I'm talking about our public health district, our hospital administrators, our medical experts. So I'm talking about the people in this area. And those people, as far as I'm hearing, are all saying, please, please, please keep it in place. We are seeing improvements, but as one of the doctors that I talked to put it, he said, you know, yes, the numbers have come down over the last several weeks, so they're, you know, it's relative. They're lower, but that doesn't mean they're good. He said they're still nowhere near acceptable. And so that's what I'm listening to, and that's what I'm basing the decision on. I also feel that, and this is again to your point, Roger, that the masks, you know, encouraging people to wear masks are, it's really about keeping us open. A lot of people are seeing the masks as something that is closing us down or, you know, making us less able to go out or something, and I see it exactly the opposite. I think that that's the thing that is allowing businesses to stay open and function. It's allowing people to go out to eat, to, you know, go shopping, and to feel comfortable doing the things they need to do. It's a protection that is allowing us to be more open, not less open. So I don't equate wearing masks with being closed down. I think it is something that is actually allowing us to live our lives more freely rather than less freely. And I just think that we need to give this more time. I don't think that we're out of the woods yet and listening to what the experts say. And it's never been about that the virus is going to go away. I mean, I agree with the idea that it's probably here to stay in some form or fashion. We're never going to be rid of this. It's going to be, you know, a vaccine that you get like a flu vaccine probably going forward. But I think we need to see more people vaccinated, particularly the over 65 that are more vulnerable. I think we're not even quite to 10% or we're somewhere roughly close to 10%, but to me that's not enough. I think we have to have more of our community protected before, and it's a small thing that we can all do to help people keep safe and to help keep our economy open and our businesses open. But until we have more people vaccinated and we know that we're going to be safer, I think we need to keep the mandate in place. There are some, we're never going to have 100% people wearing masks. There are those who are willing to wear them, there are those who are not willing to wear them. There's people that the mandate is never going to make them wear masks. I understand that. But there are people that if you have a mandate, they will wear them. So I think that it has upped our confidence, and that to me makes enough of a difference to say, you know, that I'm willing to do it. It's not fun. None of us want to do this. The whole virus thing isn't fun. I mean, this is a horrible situation that we're in, and it's not good for anybody. But if we can just have some compassion for fellow residents and just, you know, take care of each other, I think that's what we need to do.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yeah, first of all, I'm really grateful to the people of Pocatello because I think many, many people have really stepped up and done something, wear a mask, that they would prefer not to do. And I am really grateful for that, and I'm really proud of the fact that we're that kind of a community. And I don't want to waste their effort. I don't want to get within striking distance of the finish line after all the inconvenience that our folks have endured and then stop short and waste that. I also want to have, continue as the city of Pocatello to really partner and support our partners like ISU and like the school district. We frequently have conversations about how important we are to each other as partners, and the school district is doing everything that it can to reopen safely. ISU is doing the same kind of thing, and I want to partner with them in that effort to make that transition as effective and smooth for them and their patrons as it can be. I'm lucky. It's not very often that I get to feel lucky because I'm old, but I'm lucky because I'm vaccinated and I'm, my immune, it was long enough ago that I'm now at, you know, 90, 95% immune. But what I don't know, and I haven't seen any definitive science saying that I can't still be a carrier. The chances of me becoming a victim of the disease are greatly diminished for me, but I haven't seen anything that tells me whether I can still be dangerous for others. And so I am willing to continue, and we all, I mean, Heidi is right. None of us wants this to go on forever. And I would rather get to the finish line than get almost to the finish line, lay back, have it blow up, and over the long arc, end up actually extending the time that we have to wear masks. So I think it's, I still think it's a bit soon, even though I am chomping at the bit.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just, I want you to know, I was, I really was teetering on this because I know that there are people that are uncomfortable with it. Heck, I don't like wearing them. But at the same time, I did look at the data that people were sending to us to take a review of. And quite frankly, when I saw the contrast between Ada County and knowing that Boise put a mask ordinance in the very same day that their health district rescinded it, and that Boise is performing better in Ada County than the rate of increase in Bonneville County, and we are told to look, those type of things make a difference. And the trend is what we are anticipating, knowing what the criteria was when mask ordinance were put in place in certain areas, particularly that our district modeled after Idaho Falls, and one of the key components was the rate among 100,000 people, and we just barely got there. You know, it just didn't make sense to do this at this time.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Adamson. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Lurick?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay.
So as the council president, you know I'm often trying to help us find middle ground when we disagree. So it's apparent that right now we disagree on some things, but I think all of us do agree that eventually this ordinance is going to be repealed, right? We can all agree that that is eventually the intent, even if some of us want it now and some of us want it later. So, given that, I move that we instruct the legal department to prepare an ordinance repealing the mask mandate, and that that be brought forward starting with our first meeting in April. And if it does not pass, that it is also brought forward at the subsequent first of the month meetings when we review the mask mandate.
Second.
Just to clarify, that would, Jared, I believe what that would eliminate is...
The lag that you were talking about, yeah.
...lag so that when we make the decision, the decision is made. Is that what I'm, I just want to paraphrase and make sure.
And that's allowed?
So I have a couple of questions on that, too. You might, I don't know if you're going to respond to Councilwoman Stevens yet. Well, go ahead and respond. You might answer my question that I have.
Okay. So yes, based on the last failed motion, there will not be a repeal ordinance at the next city council meeting on May 18. However, on April 1st, I believe it's April 1st is the first meeting in April, there will be by ordinance, by virtue of this ordinance, a discussion on this ordinance, but there can absolutely also be a repeal ordinance... can absolutely also be a repeal ordinance prepared for council's consideration. That doesn't mean it's going to be repealed at that meeting, but if this, if this motion passes, then that can at least be there for consideration, and I can bring it to any council meeting. The ordinance doesn't prevent us from having a council meeting for consideration. It just requires that it be discussed at the first council meeting of each month.
And so, on April 1st, with that rescinding, that as an action item, then that means that if the motion to rescind at that meeting were carried, that then it would, within the next day or whenever, it would be, it would be gone?
Well, it would be a motion on the ordinance that's in front of you. You would be voting on the actual ordinance if the ordinance were on the agenda.
Right, and so, if there were a motion to rescind at the first meeting in April and that motion passed, then we'd be done, the motion, the ordinance.
It would be effective immediately.
Right.
Well, it would still require publication, yeah. Ordinances aren't effective until they're actually published.
Right, right, right. But it wouldn't be as lengthy a process or would still require this...
It would not be immediately the next day.
Yeah, it's...
It would need to be published, which probably would be the first part of the following Wednesday, Wednesday? The following Wednesday, you'd be a week out.
But it wouldn't be two weeks.
It would cut out this, what we have now, which is we have two weeks before we can even make the decision that allows it to be published. Okay.
So, what I remember is that I think we did this like on the 18th of November, and it became effective on the 21st because publication does not involve necessarily the newspaper. It involved posting it in several places.
So, we did that. There's an option in the code for ordinances to do an emergency effectiveness, which is done by posting in five public places throughout the city.
But this wouldn't be an emergency.
But repealing it, I don't think we could justify that as an emergency, so it would require the typical publication.
Some people would call it a...
So, but I want to be clear here. I want to be clear. So, the motion is to bring it and have it on an agenda. However, in ordinance currently, ordinance number 3061, that has to be decided if we will even consider the next agenda item, which would presumably be the ordinance to rescind it.
Well, what you would need to do is be in compliance with the ordinance, is to have a discussion about the ordinance, but then you could still have, the decision on the repeal ordinance that's on the agenda would not be contingent on that discussion. You can have the discussion and still consider the repeal ordinance, but you couldn't combine them into one agenda item. I would recommend two separate agenda items because of the language of the ordinance.
But, you know, you have to have it into, in my mind, because if we get to the discussion part and there's a motion made to repeal it, and that motion fails, then we're not considering it because it just failed.
Well, no, because you can only repeal an ordinance by ordinance, so you really have to consider that ordinance. If tonight's, if this motion that's on the floor passes, the motion to, or the, sorry, the ordinance to repeal will be considered on that agenda. The discussion will happen, but the ordinance will be...
It will be an up-down vote.
Exactly.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we would even need to have a motion on the first agenda item, which is the discussion. We could just all say, "This is what we're feeling," or we could say, "We don't need to say anything. Let's move on."
Exactly.
And then all we have to do is vote on the ordinance. We don't necessarily have to make a motion.
Yes, but for compliance, it does mean...
But we need to have it just to comply, yeah.
So, if we did that and just voted on the ordinance, the repeal ordinance, and that passed, then that would automatically replace the other one?
That would, yes.
That would repeal the ordinance, effective when it's published.
It would just cut out the time between...
We'd cut out the two-week lag time.
Deciding, yeah, deciding what to do and then waiting two weeks to actually do what we decided. It just...
Is it possible for us to receive the ordinance? Let's say we're not quite there. We moved, we approved this ordinance, but it needs to have a different date on it. Can we amend it just that little bit?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Well, so, we come in on April 1st and we say, "We just don't have enough feedback. We spiked right after spring break and all this stuff. We feel like we're headed in the right direction. Are we capable on April 1st end of saying, 'This ordinance that repeals should go into action.' I make a motion that it goes into action on the 15th or something like that."
So, what you'd be doing by that motion is amending the ordinance that's been published for that agenda. We can amend agenda items within reason as far as they're effective things, but ordinances are pretty set in stone. So, the ordinance that's up for consideration that night will just say, "And effective upon publication." I guess we could technically delay the publication, but I hesitate to interdict that because I'm not even for the clerk there, because we have a publication process for ordinances that are approved by the council.
I think if the intent is to do something like that and postpone it two weeks, you vote the ordinance down and you put an ordinance on in two weeks to revisit it, it would be the...
That would be cleaner.
Cleaner thing to do.
Okay, so we just would vote it down and say, "It should come back on the next meeting."
Correct.
Or with my motion, it'll automatically come back on the next first of the month.
You're saying that that would be brought back each time?
Each time on the first of the month if it...
If it didn't pass, doesn't get repealed.
So, that's, I would need the motion read back to me, but I think that's an amended motion. I think your motion was to bring it back on April 1st.
To bring it back, starting on April 1st, and if it does not get repealed on April 1st, it comes back at every first of the month.
Every first or every meeting?
Every first meeting.
Every first meeting.
Every first meeting of the month.
And we could always, if we decided we wanted it on a second meeting, we can make that motion during our first agenda item.
Okay. All right, is it clear to everybody?
I think, so it will see it the first meeting in April, and then we will automatically, we'll actually see the...
We'll automatically see it first meeting in May, first meeting in June, until the council does it.
Right. So, instead of a discussion at the first meeting every month, we now have an opportunity to rescind.
No, you will have both. You will have the discussion because the ordinance calls for that now.
In addition, okay.
In addition, you'll have the opportunity.
I will second that.
It's already been seconded.
Oh, all right.
We try to get the seconds before the discussion. Doesn't always happen, but we try.
Confused.
Okay, so is it semi-clear to everybody? Mostly clear? Okay, we have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Councilmember Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item 15 as items from the audience, and we have nobody that has signed up for the audience, so we'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and for your time. With that, we will adjourn.